You're watching Access to the Port County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the March 6th meeting of the Michigan City Common Council Workshop. You can find more information for this meeting at www accessesofortcounty.org.
All right, this is a joint workshop for the city council and administration on finance. We want to make sure that all the new council members receive their binder and then update it, the seasoned council members with the information that they needed as well. And the purpose of the meeting is really to kind of help you understand what the budget is, but also give you an update on how we ended last year and then projected revenues and some other things. We have an agenda. We have the 2023 year end recap we're going to cover, and the year-end cash balance where we were, and then 2024, we're going to go over the budget, and then talk about the 2024 budget performance report and spend a little time there, and then talk about capital projects and the Riverboat, and then budget preparation for next year's budget. And then open it up. But this is meant to be interactive, so if there's questions along the way, this is the time to do it. I'm sure there are going to be more questions afterwards as we move through this, but we want to make sure as we get to the budget cycle that you have the information that you need. I will share that we successfully turned in our annual report was due last week, so they were working a lot of weekends to get some things done. That's why we had to push this out until this timeframe to make sure that we could spend the time and not be focusing on something else versus the budget. And while Mr. Smith is, Tomiko is passing these things out, one thing I will share, the reason, another reason why I wanted us to have this meeting is because projected revenues, and just, I'm just going to give you a high-level perspective. The Riverboat money that we've been receiving has been declining, declining for several years now. You know, when I was on the council back in 2008, that council, we were very concerned about the use of Riverboat funds for operational purposes because the percentages had skyrocketed and putting those controls in. And then another council put in a rainy day fund, but we weren't funding it. The last council with Don and I and Brian and Tracy, then we began funding the rainy day fund. Well, what has happened, and you will see as we present, is that we have never cut our expenses, really. We always continue to project as if we were pre-COVID, COVID, and not cut back on expenses or cut back on the revenues that we projected. And thus, we are in this space where, you know, I've already told the department heads that I don't plan to budget capital projects for next year. So I want to make sure that everybody's on the same page when we start talking about the finance and what the Riverboat, and none of that, the Blue Chip is doing, doing well and they're vibrant in other areas. They've learned that they have to really figure out who they, who they're going to be with competition because you got South Bend, you have Lake County, they're competing with multiple gaming institutions. So they've done a good job in promoting conventions, but that's not helping our bottom line. So that impacts us dramatically. And now it's going to be on us, myself, this administration, that I put forth a conservative budget over the next couple of years to make sure that, number one, we don't spend every dime that we get on operations, number one, and that we start utilizing the Riverboat for the intended purposes of doing development and projects in the community and in the neighborhoods. We don't really have a shiny object that we can point to for the Riverboat. Riverboat has been existing over 25 years, and what can we like truly say that, man, this money has done this, this, and this? And so we are in the beginning of that, that we have to figure out what we're going to do differently as a city to make that happen. And it's my responsibility to give you the information and to get your support on things that I know we have to have, but then pull back in other areas. So who is going to start? You, Mary Lynn? So I turn it over to...
No, just a real quick question, Mayor, and this is because I know the answer because we've been doing it for so long, but it'd be a question you can clear up, especially for the new ones. You said that the casino is doing well, but that's not helping us. Could you explain how we're funded versus, you know?
Yeah, so, so we have contractual language, and Amber probably know more about that, but it's based on gaming wagers and that. So we don't get money from the restaurants, the conventions, all that, and they're doing well in the area because they, they had to reinvent themselves after COVID. And so, you know, it's based on those people going in on the floor and spending their money and slots and table and all that. But, but now, because they have heavier competition, those monies have been declining over the years, and that's kind of where, where we are now. So, but that being said...
Actually, real quick too, though, when Blue Chip originally opened and those agreements were made, there were no other casinos. And once four wins and the other one started opening, it was in the contract that our percentages would change when there were other competition.
So it all, it all impacts us. So I'll turn it over to our controller, Mary Lynn Wall.
Hello. So on your agenda, you can see where, and I don't think I had to add on here, so we submitted the annual report at 6:00 PM on Thursday. We got it done. So we got it, and part of the output of the annual report is our ending cash balance, okay? And along with this, with 25 other reports. So this is just, this was just part of the annual report. But I think it's really important that, as the mayor even alluded to, cash balances are something that I believe we've not always monitored as we go along. Because you can say, department heads can stay within your budget, but if your, if our revenues aren't coming in as projected, we can still have the fund to go negative. And actually, that happened last year with the MTH fund. And so we had to move some expenses to alleviate the MTH fund because of the fact that revenues didn't come in as projected. So we've got to not only watch our expenses, but our revenues also.
Yeah, and I've shared that with, I've been doing one-on-ones with all the department heads, and what I've shared with them, I go over their budget. And we talked through what's in their budget, and I say, they tell me what they have. And I said, well, for instance, today, I went over six seasonal workers and they hired. I said, well, you got five, this is how many you have, this is how many hours they can work, and then you're going to run out of hours. Oh, they, and, and they just think that they can work 40 hours a week until they need them. But no, your budget says this. Let me do the calculation for you. They only can work this many hours. And showing the department heads what they can spend is, is important, but also letting them know, hey, this is based on projected revenues. So we're monitoring that with the department heads. And I told them, once supported, we're going to go over it. You know, there might be some tightening of different things. Don't just go spend your money. Just because it's in the budget don't mean you have the money yet.
So I think the first sheet was this cash, and this is, this is actually from, from our annual report.
So you guys are looking at the first one?
At the cash, at cash investment. Okay, so that's our cash balances. I also kind of wanted to know, how many funds we have and we're responsible for? Nine. Just so that you know, a lot of these funds we don't budget. And so I tried to go through what we submit to the DLGF, and that's what the, that's what the X's are for. These are the funds that we actually budget, and you will be approving, the council will be approving through our budget process. But there's many more funds, a lot of them are, are donation funds, non-reverting funds, and so forth. So I just wanted to give you the complete listing of all of our funds. But this is not, this is not going to be what's included totally in your budget workbook because the DLGF doesn't even monitor many of our funds, most, probably I would say, most of our funds. So this is last year...
Mayor Lynn, can you explain what the DLGF is?
Department of Local Government and Finance. That's who we got. And there's actually a portal out there that is on, is on Gateway that anyone can look, and any of the residents can, can look at our approved budgets, and it's all in that transparency portal is, is for our budget. So we have to submit our budget to the DLGF, and we'll be doing that in October of this year. But then the prior administration and the prior council passed the budget that we're working from this year. Okay, so then we printed out the actual resolution, and this is showing all the funds that the prior council actually approved. This, this looks here, okay, just to note. A note of, was kind of interesting, I wanted to note, you look at the adopted tax levy for the general fund, $24 million. That's before the property taxes caps. We only received $16 million. Just so that you realize, we do lose almost $1 million to the property tax caps. But we have to, but it's reported at this, but the actual, if you look at, we'll get there. When you look at your actual budget worksheet, well, the budget for property taxes is down to the $16 million. These funds are listed in the front page, are the ones that are covered by the state board accounts. On the back, we have our home room funds. Those aren't reviewed by the DLGF, but we still run it through the budget process. Yes.
And they're going to hear a term that be tossed around during the budget, the difference between what we got and what we, the 24 to 16, that is the circuit breaker.
Circuit breaker, yes.
They're going to hear that a lot when we start talking about the budget.
Yeah, when we talk about, that's the circuit breaker. Correct, correct.
You'll know when you hear what it actually means.
So then, we actually, so Tomiko ran the budget workbook that's very, very similar to what the council last year worked from when they, when they reviewed our budget, reviewed the mayor's budget. This is, this is the 2024 budget. If you go, it's all, it's going to be listed by fund. The first fund on here is the general fund. And I want to show you that if you go to page 40, okay, if you go to page 40, you will see the total expenses for the general fund are $30 million.
In your book.
In your book.
If you have a book, it's in your book.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot about that book.
In your, in your...
I didn't get it wrong.
Your book or your update?
So this is, this is by fund, and this is how your budget workbook, workbooks are presented. And if you look, there's, there's the same, $30,663, which is the same as your adopted budget from last year. All of our funds, well, first, and I think, I think maybe Dr. Coram, you might have even mentioned something last night, with each fund, we first list the revenues that support the fund in the workbook. So you can see for the general fund, here's the property taxes that are allocated to the general fund, the $16 million. Then we have...
Can you tell me what, what page you are referencing?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, let's make sure we're...
Are we, are we on page 40?
No, the budget, the budget book. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
48?
It's on page 40.
No, it's on page one, in the beginning.
Wait, what's that?
I don't have on page 40 mine.
40 is on page 48. Oh, mine is not on page 48.
I want to say that would be different. Here, here.
Yeah.
Yours is from the original.
Well, she said that's on about 6:30.
This is exactly, you, you have now.
She just kind of explained all of her.
If you're on the actual page one of the general fund, it starts with revenues. So those are all the revenues that support the general fund.
My team won't have, they won't see that. I think they have, they don't have a copy, do they?
They have, everybody has a copy. Everybody needs a copy. Okay, and then if you scroll through and you keep on, then it starts into the expenses. And our general fund is departmentalized. So you, the council will be approving a departmentalized budget, meaning within the general fund, you have the city clerk, you've got the controller's office, you've got border works, you've got vector. So those are all, that's why it goes general fund, dot 000 is our revenues. All the revenues that post to the general fund help the entire general fund.
And can I point something out?
General bear, yeah.
So when you look at that, that first page, and you look at general property taxes, and she talked about the $16 million for 2023, it was 15, 448, $15 million.4 in 2023, and then it was 14.787 in 2022, you know, so these are the actual amounts that, the revenue. But for 2024, that's, that's, is that what we're receiving or projected?
That's the projected, but those are based on, they're pretty, the state gives us the numbers.
All right.
So those should be, those should, yes, after. That's why this has got $24 million. But we are only going to receive $16 million, and we're usually very close. We'll get a distribution in June, and we'll get another distribution in the summer. So we'll know, we'll, we get it, we get it in June. But it also depends on property tax, on collections and stuff. But I'm pretty confident that we should at least get that, get that amount. But once again, this is where sometimes there's some misunderstanding, especially with departments. Any monies coming into the general fund support the entire general fund. It's not, the revenues aren't necessarily, aren't departmentalized, but your expenses are.
Ellen, can I ask a few questions here? In the general fund, the first section, it says, local option tax, the estate shared revenues, so local option tax, $3,530,000. Is that for, for the police and fire and all?
No, no, that's in a separate, no, that's, that's public safety.
That's public safety.
That's a totally separate fund. We have to put that in a public safety fund. We have to put that. That's, that's just regular local option taxes that we can put into your general fund.
Okay, all right. And this is coming through the county?
Yes, there's state revenues that come through the county.
Through the county, okay.
Yep.
And then there's other thing, the taxes, and you have taxes, utilities, $444,000. It's, it's like a pilot probably.
Correct, correct.
So is this from NIPSCO?
No, I don't believe, who's paying those? That's not NIPSCO, that's, I'm not, I'll have to look into that.
That's a significant amount, so that's...
We used to get the silver birch, but the silver birch now is going to a different water. Oh, that's the water department, you're right, you're right. That is the water department.
It's the water department.
That's the water department.
So we make it, we have an agreement that they pay us. Correct.
The other question I had was, like, when NIPSCO, the plant closes, will that impact this general property taxes?
Of course it will. It will, but that, I will say, that's not a discussion for today, but that is a discussion that I've already started having.
Okay, all right.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Yep, we just got regular licenses and permits. That's what we, we collect from, from our, our planning department and so forth. So we have a lot of miscellaneous revenues, but the most of our revenues do come from property taxes and other inter-local taxes. And the next, the next, so the next section will start with the department actually expenses, which... Okay. We go to non-departmental. Actually, the controller's office on my book starts on page three or five.
What is it? What's the number?
Page five. The revenues always are going to go first in any fund. And then once the revenues are finished, when the revenues are, when we post it over, we'll be reporting on all the revenues, then it starts with the expenses. And in the general fund, it's going to then go to each department.
Ellen, on the first page, I have a question. Licenses and permits, building permit, $1,832,000.
You want me to explain? I can explain that one. All right, so we have a couple of major projects. So if you look down there...
They're detailed.
They're, they're detailed underneath. So what they do is if you see licenses and permits building, link down below, our regular building permits, we anticipate $32,000, but from Sola, $1.5 million based on the total amount for that project, and then $100,000 from the new subdivision. So we break it down, you know, underneath, but...
Our budgeting process allows us the tool. So if you ever look there, like contractual services, we ask these through our departments to detail those. Then if you, if you look at any of, and we can do it for the revenues too, but mainly, a lot of times we do that for the expenses. So if you flip over to, because you see, well, we go back to the permits, you'll see budget transactions. So we're allowed to put in budget transactions on most anything we want to. And so I think we felt like we wanted to split those out so someone knew why that number was so large.
Thank you.
You're welcome. For all the, for, when you go to, when you flip to the first department, which is the controller's department, from the expenses on page five, that starts the expenses, once again, you will see budget transactions. Okay? So if you look at the salaries and wages, we budgeted the $366,000. Then we have the breakdown fund on all, and all the employees and, and the gross pay. Not everything is obviously detailed out, so you'll see just the share of FICA, it's just a one line. Perf is just one line. So whenever you see things indented and seeing budget transactions, that's just because we're, we're just providing more detail on that. Does that make sense? But when you scroll through this, it's going to go through every department in the general fund. And all of the salaries and the, the regular salaries and wages will be detailed on the number of employees that are out there, that are, that are in that department. Let's flip to central maintenance, if you want to.
What page is that?
I'll show you. Page 17.
Mayor, quick question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Payroll administrator, do you lose like a company like AT&amp;T or H? It's done internally.
That's our payroll. Yes, so this can go through. Maintenance got all there.
Central maintenance.
But I wanted to point out the central maintenance only because we'll see how we, what I said before, that we, the other contractual services, that a lot of times for departments, that is a large number. For the police department, it's really large. We ask that each of the department heads detail their other contractual services. So if you look on pages 16 and 17...
Or is it 15? It starts at the bottom, 15? Central maintenance.
Yeah, contractual services starts at the bottom of 16.
Of 16.
Of 16.
43910.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So you're going to look at the contractual services.
Correct.
So then $27,917 is detailed. And that is hopefully consistent throughout all these, then we have to go, go through all the departments. We detail the employees and we detail the contractual services, and some departments detail more. They can put in details if that, if that helps them know what makes up that total to that line item. The system, the budget, the budget module of our system allows you to do that. So this, you will have this for every fund that you'll be approving for the budget. Okay, all good?
Yeah, and just, I've, I've seen the 2023 actual and the 22, the actual amount. So when you look at, one thing that we are looking at or will be looking at is how do we consolidate? We don't have a consolidated purchasing. Everybody does their own purchasing. And every department can order from different places, you know, so, you know, even to the point of pest control, every department. So we are trying to get to a place where we're consolidating that going forward because it's just been, basically, everybody can do what they want. And so we're, we're working through that, that process right now, but...
It takes time. You know, we looked at it as an economy, also it takes some time, but it does result in savings.
Yes, yes, it does.
So once again, this is every fund within this. So is there any other questions? And you'll get training more when it becomes the budget time, and the two will be able to decipher this. But this is basically follows the same format for every fund.
Yep, and just look at, the general fund, I just encourage you to spend some time with it.
That's where most of our, and mostly the general fund is salaries and benefits, just so that you know. So once the budget, the budget's been approved, I also found, this was a question that Dr. Coram mentioned, and I just want to give this for information, I'm not going to go over it, the uses of funds. It's in the color sheet here, just for your information. Yep.
Sources and uses.
Uses of funds. Here's a chart, this has some training with state board accounts, state. And on the back page of this, it also references where you can go for guidance on, and believe me, we have to sometimes reference this. I just got a call from someone, well, what can we use the local road, street money for? We have to go to the state board accounts and kind of look and see exactly what the uses are. And that's listed on the back here, so if anybody ever wants to kind of dig more into the, the funds that are probably listed on your first page. For some of our home room funds, they were probably established by ordinance. Those, you might have to look at, you might have to request from the first officer, us, to find the ordinance that established the fund, and then that should list the, the appropriate uses of that fund. Like a lot of our donation funds, like list on exactly what the uses are. But I just thought this was kind of useful, just for your information.
Just a comment, the last page, Riverboat, Mayor was just saying that the two sources of the money coming in is admissions and wagering. So if the number of people coming goes down and the number of their wagering that goes down, then how, how does it turn out?
Yeah, that's probably in Trump style.
But they got plenty of people coming on the boat that's just going to gamble and fancy, maybe not going to game. That's not admissions.
That is not.
So we don't get, that's not been written in where we get a portion of that wagering.
But I will say, I did meet, we did have a meeting of other local mayors that have casinos, and we talked through with AIM about legislation and things we should support, things we should fight. So I haven't participated in that group.
Thank you.
I believe we still have a budget performance report for just the general fund. Correct. So, so once everything's been approved, and the council uses that budget worksheet to approve everything, we have an integrated system so that, once again, that adopted budget now is used for the department heads in what we like to call, what we call the budget performance report. If you look at the total page, we should read the last page, because this only is the general fund. There's that same $30,663,000, that is the adopted budget. Can't stress enough, all the department heads must stay within their budget. And we might ask you to, to cut your budget if revenues aren't, aren't coming in as expected. But work within your budget, hopefully you'll be okay. The next column are budget amendments. We just passed ordinances both in border works and, and the council for encumbered funds. Those show up in the budget amendments. This means we may not have, I think we might have got some in the, in the general fund because that's adding to the budget because we're encumbering that money from the prior year. So that's added to the department's budget.
Where's your budget amendment? Sorry.
Uh, second column. I'm sorry, I was the first page. I'm just exploring the report. This is a tool for our department heads, just want to make sure. We have controls in place in our ledger that, and you might run into this in the last, especially in the last quarter of the year, can't validate a batch because it's going over budget. If that happens, call the controller's office. We will assist you on trying to figure out well, can we transfer money from another classification, which will require a resolution from the council? Or we might have to ask for additional appropriation, or we might work with, well, maybe we need to cut something from another, we'll have to figure it out. So that's why we've got to monitor and, and this, we'll go over the whole, all the columns when we get, when I get to them. So the budget amendments will be encumbered funds first. I mean, not, not first, but those are the first things that roll into that budget amendments. Any transfers that might go through, whether they're, um, major transfers through resolution or minor transfers. Additional appropriations will also show up in this column. So for instance, we just passed the park. It's not on here yet, or this isn't even the park budget, I mean, the golf budget. You will see that amount going into the budget for the amount that the council additionally appropriated for the golf. So the department head will have that additional money in the budget. Then we just have the, um, amended budget is just those, those columns added. Current on transactions, current on transactions. Year-to-date encumbrances will be any of, any of the department heads' open purchase orders. So that, that, that's encumbered money. We wanna take that out of your budget because you've already obligated those funds. So that's why you've got year-to-date encumbrances. And then year-to-date transactions will be all the transactions that are posted, obviously year-to-date. Thing you wanna watch for department heads is to see your budget balance and your percentage that you've used. You start seeing that percentage get kinda high, please contact the Controllers Office and we'll try to mitigate the transfer funds and try to figure out what we can do to help assist that.
Cause technically it should be one twelfth, then, then one six, you know, each.
Sometimes, yeah. But then some of their contracts are off the air.
Right, but if you show fifty percent in March or April.
Something wrong.
Something's wrong.
Well, for instance, we just had this happen, major snow.
Right.
Sean has got, Sean has used up half of his contractual services already because he had to go out. So we may have to, we'll, we'll see. We monitor his budget because of those unexpected events that may need, that we might need additional. Worry about that later, right now we're fine, but we're, I told Sean we'll be monitoring it.
Yes.
Okay, so that's the budget performance report.
Marilyn, good question here. Revenue totals, um, thirty million, seven hundred and five. So is this, you, you said that this is the number twenty-four, but actually it's only sixteen, or something like that earlier. So is this the real amount?
Well, this is just, the budget performance report does not have the, are you talking about the, the thirty, thirty million, seven oh five? Are the revenues expected for the general fund?
Okay, that, that's the revenues expected.
Expected, yeah.
After that adjustment you talked about, it'll be, earlier you said that it was twenty-four and it could be.
No, this'll have the sixteen million in it. So this'll be actual monies that we're hoping to get.
So the, the number used here is sixteen, correct?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. And that's something else that we can monitor. And I know because, especially the general fund, everything's departmentalized, it's really, it's really my office that will be looking at the monies coming in to the general fund, sixteen million. Because it's the general fund, you're just.
Oh, it's all of the funds.
All of, all of those, um.
Marilyn, I'm sorry, can I go back to?
I think that's the.
The, so the property tax was twenty-four million before the levy. I'm just starting at the top.
Okay.
And then we had like eight, eight, eight million or so.
Correct, circuit breaker.
Circuit breaker. So we got sixteen million. So that sixteen million is included in this thirty million, seven oh five?
Yes.
So what else makes up this thirty million, seven oh five? That's the rest of the, that's the rest of the, all of the rest of. All of the other funds that are, that were listed in the revenues on the, on, on the year.
Does this, does this include Riverboat money also that maybe, that is not included?
Cause it's just the general.
Riverboats, it's a separate fund. It's a separate fund.
Okay, so if you go to, back to your budget, your, your actual budget workbook, you will see the thirty million, seven oh five. Uh, the total of the general fund on page forty.
Right.
So, yeah, so that's the sixteen million, that's all of these things that were listed up here as possible, including the, the permit, the money from the permits.
Yeah, that's all the permits.
All the red lines and everything, everything we can get.
Correct. But the budget performance report mainly is a tool for our department heads, so they're just looking at their expenses.
Okay.
Right.
And so.
Yeah.
Yep, yep. So are we good?
Yeah.
For now.
Okay. Now we're working about, now you can go into the, um, the, so part of, so this is, so this is the twenty-twenty-four budget. Once again, department heads, you gotta stay within your budget. Included in the twenty-twenty-four budget were Riverboat capital items. I actually gave to you so that everyone realize. And I also think it's important for department heads and the council to see the actual worksheet that we provide to, to, um, the DLG. That is, that's this.
This one first, so they see the original?
Correct, this is the original.
I gave you all.
So this is, this is actually what we, what we give to, what we have to, um, fill out for the DLG.
The budget estimate?
The budget estimate. This one is just Riverboat. And I just printed off Riverboat, we have to do this for every fund.
So we do this for every?
Every fund that's in the budget, that's in the, that's in the budget we submit. Okay? And I know from, um, from our, our season council people, we know that, we always say, and this works, we always have to start with the actual June thirtieth balance. So that's why we really have to wait until we reconcile our June thirtieth balance because that's a solid number. Okay, so we have to wait till all the revenues, everybody's got everything posted, everything's in, and we reconcile. So that's why it's really tough for us to get this before August, July, August. So that, that's the start of it.
So we have Riverboat and we have the Boyd Development. So there's two funds.
That we didn't have.
But I, but I just want you to look at the Riverboat one because you also have another sheet that, the, the first one, the first, this one here is what we submitted for the budget, which is, um, a projection. So what Marilyn has gone and done on the next sheet that is also has Riverboat, but it's horizontal and it's got red numbers on the side of it, that's gonna actually show you what the actuals were.
This one going this way.
And it, it says Riverboat at the top.
So one of the, we clearly were with.
This form and then made some columns next to it so we can, she can explain.
Yeah, it's not gonna.
Yeah, so you start with the June thirtieth balance. Okay, so if you look, and realize we were submitting this in September of last year. So twenty-twenty-three has not fully occurred yet. So when we were submitting this, we had to put in estimated revenues July through December of twenty-twenty-three, which will have to be during this for twenty-twenty-five. We gave to, we projected six million, eight hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars of revenues. We only received three million, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Okay? Yes, so now, based on that sheet that I've, we've just sent off to, um, State Board of Accounts, I know what the actual cash balance is of the Riverboat. We projected in our budget five million, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars, eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand as our cash balance.
At the end of the year.
At the end of the year. Actual was three million, six hundred and one thousand, five hundred and thirty-one. And that's a solid number. And that's what we reported on our annual report. So we're down to.
Marilyn, why, why is there discrepancy because we got less revenues?
No, because we projected, we over, we over-projected our revenues. We should not have projected six million dollars in revenues. Mistake. So.
I, I have a couple of questions, um, you know, the council, Tillman, Albert Clark's, when she presents a financial report, she mentions one and then she says ETF.
Oh, that's an EFT.
EFT.
Oh, then this is a method of payment.
It's a fund transfer, okay.
Yeah, yes, yes, it's just, correct.
So, so let me add a couple of things to, um, to comments to that. Um, and, and we, we didn't review this in the budget. They, I'll have them look at their, um, Riverboat funds. So, um, so there was an over-projection of the Riverboat funds. But again, um, our council did have, the last council passed a resolution for rainy day funds, right? So, thank you, that's what I mean. So, um, the, this is what's interesting. So we, the actual amount for twenty-twenty-two, the Riverboat funds was three million, eight hundred and thirty-four thousand. Twenty-twenty-three was three million, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand. But for some reason, um, the last administration projected six million, three hundred and three thousand. So, um, you will see that also in our Boyd Development Fund that we over-projected the last several years in our Boyd Development Fund. In previous years, pre-COVID, we were getting over a hundred and four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars a year. Three of the four last years, we've only received fifty thousand dollars. So again, over-projecting revenues based on pre-COVID. So the reason why I wanted to have this workshop, I need you all to understand where we are. Uh, I'm not setting off alarm bells because I think we, there's some things we can do as an administration to work through with. Uh, but you need to understand, so when I say we, we're not gonna, um, put capital into the, the, um, next year's budget and when I say that for this year, we're gonna need the rainy day fund because we over-projected by three million dollars, this is why. It's not because of, um, um, cause I, believe me, I don't like spending Riverboat money on operations. And, and my intent is that we're gonna cut back on that. But in the meantime, we have to be lean and mean this year and next year. And, um, the way this budget was projected was based on using rainy day funds, in my opinion. I think that's where it came from.
Yeah, I, I think unfortunately, I, two things. Um, I think we always had that nine, ten million dollar. I think, I think, I think, um, you might've even mentioned that, um.
Two.
And that, that, that's always been the number, like, oh, for Riverboat, we've always put that in there and I think we've always said the budget. And I, I really think that was accidentally done, that, that same number was put in there, forgetting that every time we get Riverboat distributions, I take twenty-five percent of it off the top and put it rainy day. So in truly, and, and, and.
So we are receiving nine.
Well, we received eight.
Eight point something.
Yes, I ran a.
Because we took the rainy day off the top.
Correct. The total rainy day and Riverboat that we received in twenty-twenty-three was eight point one million. Which is probably lower than what we've received. I think we used to receive closer to ten.
Yeah.
I'd have to do some analysis, I didn't, I just rammed what we got last year. But that's rainy day and Riverboat, which still is the same monies coming in, it's wagering and it's admissions. We just take twenty-five percent of it and, and put it to the rainy day. Yep.
So if I'm reading this right, we're already projecting that we're gonna be over six hundred thousand in the red at the end of the year, and that'll come off of rainy day.
Well, that's only if, see, we projected ten million dollars of expenses this year on the sec, on the bottom half of this worksheet. We have told the department heads.
This one's the sideways.
The sideways one.
Sideways.
The sideways one, it's probably the same on both of them, but the sideways one here. Um, right now, there are some Riverboat expenditures that we've had to make. We had to pay our ESG, that's a, that's a contractual obligation. Um, there, the nursery payment was a, was a, was an obligation we had to pay. Um, and we've already committed to, um, some phases in the CCMG. We really are utilizing, um, it's gonna cost us so, so much less to get some park projects done from what Shannon had projected. So we do have some, some Riverboat money that we know we really need to spend. And then we've told the department heads, no, you can't go out by that tractor right now. We can't go out, Shannon, you can't go out by your golf carts. We have to prioritize. And then we will probably look at the rainy day if we decide and the council decides that, okay, these are needed expenditures. We can, you know, we'll, we'll ask for a rainy day. Um, but that's only, that's six, that would be if we truly spent the whole ten million, but we're not going to. That's why we found, because I found where we over-budgeted the revenue. So we put a halt to Riverboat spending this year in the twenty-twenty-four budget, except for what was.
Okay, so since you did that, this is not six hundred thousand in the red.
No, we, yeah, only if we spent, I'm just.
Only if we.
Only if we, and, yes, correct, absolutely, absolutely.
But even if you, if you didn't, we're, we're only looking at going into rainy day for six hundred thousand or more. A, a, assuming a zero at the end.
That's, so let me, let me make sure, let me say this, this way. So for budget, um, year twenty-twenty-four, if you look at, I wanna look at the actual line numbers. So at line number fourteen, it says nine million, six hundred, six hundred and ninety-two thousand, five hundred, five hundred and sixteen dollars. But with our revised amount, we're talking about only six million.
And that's based on last year's numbers, I did not decrease it. So it may not be this, once again, this is twenty-twenty-four numbers that we've only gotten two distributions of them. So this, I went ahead and plugged in this last year's numbers, just to.
Have a baseline.
Yep.
Yeah, but the overall, the overall red number that caused me concern was the, um, that we over-budgeted based on numbers and the projected revenues, two point two seven million.
Correct.
So that's why, um, I, you know, I share it with the, uh, department heads that the Riverboat is important, that we monitor their spending, if there's anything we can pull back, that we want on budget for capital. We'll always bring that to the council. Hopefully with a plan, I've shared with them, you know, need to look for funds and opportunities that we can either, um, piggyback with something that's happening, whether it's a project, a nursery project, or a grant, or something, um, so that we can do that. But this is kinda where we're at. Um, and right now, we're just monitoring it.
And Boyd, only because, um, that fund has a large cash balance. It's not affecting this year's budget. But we will have to look at where we, we might have to, we have to transfer those expenses that we normally would've paid out of Boyd to a, to a different fund, because we're only gonna get fifty thousand dollars a year.
Yeah.
When we just get four hundred.
Yeah, and, and I did reach out this blue chip because I thought it was a mistake.
That's what we were hoping.
I, um, I reached out and I said, hey, I think we're missing a decimal. And he said, no, you're not. I tried, I tried. But, um, so, so what I will say though is that we will make sure we do a better job. We, we'll probably do this again prior to the budget.
Oh, absolutely.
Process, we'll do this again so that you know where we're at, like kinda midway through the year, so that we can give you an update and to kinda share, you know, what's happened or what's changed before we start the budget process. We'll do this another time.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
May I ask, may I ask for clarification on the difference between Riverboat and Boyd?
Okay, that was my question.
The difference between those two funds, Riverboat, Boyd.
That comes, starts from the first agreement, and I'm.
And that's where the enrichment corporation money comes from.
From Boyd.
From, yeah.
Yeah.
From Boyd.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
So, so they have to meet a certain threshold to trigger additional monies. The minimum, if they don't meet that minimum threshold, we get at least fifty thousand dollars.
So last year, we brought only fifty?
This year, yeah.
So technically Boyd's only supposed to be used for economic development projects, Riverboat can be used for anything.
Yeah.
That's the difference.
Okay, yeah.
Very curious.
And separate fund.
Yeah.
Angie, if I may, I'm gonna make a comment now, so wait until the end.
Yeah.
Yeah, instead of waiting until before the budget process to enlighten the council on where we stand on the budget, we have like a semi-annual update, you know, another workshop like this and.
That's what I just said.
Yeah, you didn't say semi-annual, you said before the budget process.
I said midway, I said a few, couple of months, halfway through the year.
Oh, okay.
Yes.[1725.74]
All right, well, all right.
June thirty?
Yes.
Yeah.
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 So we do this again before we start the budget.
Yeah, now, with, with the department heads, maybe I'm fast forwarding this. But, and I appreciate Mr. Gavrotic being here, department head, but have all the other department heads heard the same, uh?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
In our staff meeting.
Yeah.
And do they have to, will they go over their budget like quarterly or whatever with the controllers?
It should be the monthly, they have plans.
So, so what, what we're doing right now, so, um, I, I talk about it at each staff meeting. We've had three. And, um, and we're doing it in one-on-ones right now with me. And then, um, just making sure, and then I'm having, encouraging them to spend time, because they, those are the questions I'm asking them before they spend money. Like today, I, like I said, I went through an exercise with one of, with, um, one of the department heads about seasonal employees. And I said, hey, this is it, right here. This is all you've got, right here. How many hours is that? You know, and so we went through the process and I said, well, you want them to work now, we're gonna have to let them go in August. You know, and I had to explain, so this is how many hours you've got per employee. So if you want them here till this time period, you're gonna have to cut their hours now, since they're seasonal, down to thirty-two hours a week. And just showing them, and I think it's more of a, a learning, nobody's really covered that with anybody. So when I'm having one-on-ones and we talk through their budget, I'm like, okay, this is what this is. This is how you look at this. This is how you look at Riverboat. And, um, and then at every staff meeting, we talk budget, I mention something. But we're gonna do a similar workshop like this, just for the department heads and their deputies. So they can understand it. But every single one, I'm like, hey, you need to, you know, you need to understand, that's a projected revenue. That doesn't mean you have it. And I think that's the, the, the misconception, you know, that they just thought, oh, it's in the budget, I can spend it.
Oh, sure.
And I said, you know, by September one, I'm gonna let you know for real.
What you have.
What you have. But if I see an anomaly, because that was the, the, the cool thing. So soon as Mary Lynn, um, caught, she said, hey, you need to see this. You know, this is early on. So I was like, what? What now? And so, um, but I'm like, this is not something we can get through. It, I'm not worried about it from that standpoint. It's not a dire thing. I'll just have to come back to the council and say, this is what it is. Yeah, we, we need part of the rain, rainy day money to get through this for this year and maybe next year as I start decreasing things. But also know, um, we're doing a revenue, uh, study on our fees, on what fees need to be increased. You know, is there a way for us to, um, consolidate different fees we have? We have a lot of things out there that it's just been that way.
Right.
So, um, and, and, and looking at it, just a broad stroke, I haven't really gone through the whole thing. Looking at our neighbors, I mean, we charge, we haven't increased our fees and our neighbors charge way more than we do. So I think once we do that, that will help us too.
Yeah, well, I just gotta say, you know, I'm glad that you bring this out now. Since I've been on council, we've been through this, and I believe Brian, we've been through this twice already. Once with the near administration, now with the Perry administration. A new person comes in the office, we're three million dollars in the hole, or we're four million dollars in the hole. These are the reasons, oh, you know, when you came in on the last council, same thing. Money, we're in a hole, we're in a hole. Why are we in a hole? Where the people that sign the budgets, nobody tells us a thing until at the end of the year, or the fifty, the January, oh, by the way, we're three million dollars in a hole.
Yeah.
How'd that happen?
And I think, yeah, and I, I, I agree.
Practice, it's thirty dollars.
Well, if I think some of the practices, and some of the practices, and I'm gonna tell you this. The previous years tell you that we're not gonna get that kind of money.
Right.
Right?
Right.
You would, you would think, but I think what has happened over time, we'll ask every department what they want and just put it in the budget and make the revenues match. I mean, that's, that's my impression.
Backwards budgeting.
Right. And my, my thing is, tell me what our projected revenues are, and then we'll back our budget into it versus the opposite. And I think that's, that's the problem that, that we have.
If, if I could kind of say too, though, we all have to really be honest with the fact that this last administration, this cycle, the council, the mayor, you know, all of that was contentious. So there were decisions made to not cut, to make the council, I mean, it was political things being done that led us this way, but ultimately, we always budget to spend all of our revenue. And I don't know, I don't run my house like that. I don't think y'all do either. But that's what we have done historically, is that we get ten million, let's spend ten million.
Right.
And-
And it's not really ten million.
It's correct, correct. And they never made the adjustment for it. So I think that, for me, this is my third administration, and this is the most kumbaya the council and the mayor has been to even have these conversations without it being accusatory, you know what I mean? Or pointing finger. It's like open dialogue. So I feel like if we can continue this, and I know Mary Lynn agrees, to have these open dialogues, we won't be in this.
We won't be in this, Shannon.
And we need to better use the tools we have. But I think I talked to Twinko before about how we used to do the budget. And I think, and I think that's part of, part of the issue. So used to doing the budget, the, kind of the old way where you should just look at the expenses and create these Excel spreadsheet with just the expenses. And then when you run it through this Form 4B, as long as your fund doesn't go negative, we're okay. Now we have New World, and if you look at your budget, you look at that, if you look at that total page with any funds, we'll tell you total expenses, total revenues.
Yeah.
And there's times when total expenses are more than total revenues. That's a problem.
Right.
Now with Riverboat, sometimes that makes sense. Let's say we're buying a fire truck, one-time hit. We've saved up enough money to buy a fire truck. Oh, okay, that's why we're going into our cash balance, because we've saved money for that. It's not gonna be a reoccurring, per, per, it's not gonna be a reoccurring thing. But for our operating, you can't have that, because the most, once again, especially the general fund, most of these are salaries. So that's going to be reoccurring, and if not, hopefully going up every year. Um, so, but that's, that's kind of where I'm at with the budget performance report. So this is, this puts us, this puts us at the end of twenty twenty-four. Once again, for department heads, if you see, if you please, if you see problems with your budget, come to us early. Um, if I see problems with your revenues, well, I may have, because I'll be monitoring, I'll be monitoring the general fund revenue. So that might be something that you won't see, Carter, you won't see, because the general fund revenues are supporting everybody. Yep.
Do we get our problem fixed?
Get what?
Did our problem fix with the fire department?
Which problem's it?
About the allocation of everybody's body vehicles. I think, uh-
Oh, vehicle, y'all purchasing? Y'all purchasing the vehicle? Yeah, that one, yeah, we'll get it.
Oh, yes, yes, oh, absolutely. I mean, that's, that's, yeah, yes, 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 absolutely. We figured that, yeah, yeah. We are allowed to, to take some money from CCD, yep.
That, that was gonna be my question today. You brought it up, the fire, because there are fire truck purchases. That's what I remember from when I was on council before. You, you cut back on capital projects, although people don't like to, but capital expenditures, back then, I'm sure that's true now, are huge for the fire department, police also, but more so for the fire department.
Right.
Is there a plan in place to budget for that on a regular basis? Because those, they pretty much come up on a regular basis.
One of the things that we want to do, but we gotta get to this, is keep, is to create a capital, um, improvement plan. And so that way, we could put, set aside a certain amount each year versus, oh, we need a new garbage truck, or, oh, we need a new this. Cause that's what's been happening. And so, um, we have a comeback to, to, I'll use refuse for now as an example. We have a comeback to it. People may not wanna hear, even hear this, um, but, I mean, the refuse, um, department, those vehicles are expensive. We don't have like a, a fund where, um, you know, we, we give away a lot. We don't charge for, for a while, we didn't charge for pickups. You know, we didn't charge for this. We don't find people for trash. We're gonna go back, come back with a new council and start talk, having those discussions again. Because right now, um, um, Brett Kelly, who's the vector control, they're like, um, keeping track of the, the, the weight of everything they're picking up, all the trash they're picking up. Um, just, just off of properties, right? And we hadn't done it before. I was like, hey, people need to understand what y'all do and how much trash y'all pick, y'all pick up weekly. And I said, but somebody can put out dump stuff three, four, five, six, seven times a year, and we need to charge, and so we need to get that on the books sooner than later. That's gonna be coming back to the council. We need to charge for that. Um, people have more than one tote. They have two, three, four, five, six totes. They don't get charged for it. And, uh, you know, those are things that we're gonna look at. And people will say, well, I said, well, I'm looking for revenues. If you want to, if we're gonna provide services to the community, it's a cost to it. It's not included in this tax cap. We have a circuit breaker system in the state. All that money we use to cover all those services, we're taking, they're taking from us right off the top. That money's gone. Nine, what, six million dollars?
Eight.
Eight million dollars taken from us right off the top. So we have to go find the revenues now. And the revenues are, if we want to provide a service like that, we have to charge for certain services. And, and, um, look at what's, um, comparable, because every community outside of Michigan, they're charging. We're not. So we're still probably gonna be cheaper than everybody, even when we start. Um, but it's gonna be different when people have never paid anything for it. So that's, that's gonna be something coming to the council. Yes, Tom?
Yeah, if I could, uh, Tim, in, in reference to that question about fire trucks. So, and I give the credit to, uh, the last administration in the fire department, they put together, by the request of the city council, they put together a truck committee. They went back and they studied the age of the fire truck fleet. They came back with the recommendations on, you know, what they needed now. Cause I think we bought three fire trucks, right? Yeah, two or three. So anyway, yeah, it was, it was a lot. It was a lot, it was a lot of money. But now, they actually have a schedule of when a certain truck, I think there's ten years on a fire truck.
Ten years on a fire truck.
Correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. So we know ten years from now, truck number twenty-two has gotta be replaced. And truck fourteen, fifteen, you know, whatever the time period is, but just a schedule now. That makes sense. Instead of come to the council, go, hey, we need two fire trucks, we need twenty, two hundred or two point five billion dollars. Okay, where are we gonna get that? If we didn't have, I'm telling you guys, if we didn't have that ARCA money-
Yeah.
To get us through last year, this city would be in dire straits. I'm not saying we'd be bankrupt, but we would be in bad, bad financial shape, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anyway, I just wanted to tell you that.
Well, I don't, I'm glad that's still in place. One of the things going on this trash thing, and it takes me back to yesterday at our meeting, we had a lot of people came up and talked about trash in the city and how big, a bigger problem is, and I think we all agree with that. But at the end of the meeting, uh, I had to say this, signed some orders, and so a lady came up to me and told me, you know what's going on in a lot of our communities? Because it's so expensive to have trash picked up in this surrounding area.
The dump they dump.
People are driving down the alleys and dumping it into our citizens' cans that are in the alley. Then they come out, they got no place to put their trash, they put it by the trash, and they get pee on that. So I, I don't know if that's widespread, or if a lot of people are doing that.
Wow, I've heard that one. I've never heard that.
But somebody needs to look into that, because she said it's widespread on the alleys.
Well, I will say, we're, we're starting to pilot on a couple of streets, um, to move from the alleys to the front, to the, to the curb. Um, our goal, you know, is to, to figure out a way to, to get out of the alleys. Because quite frankly, when the storm happened, that's very problematic for us to clear those alleyways. And, um, it just caused a lot of, of problems. And I, and so, um, I know that Chris Carter is looking at a couple of streets to, to pilot, some areas to see if we can move from alleys to, to the farm.
I think they have it all. The residents have to find somewhere to put their cans, so that they're not easily accessible to somebody driving by.
Yeah, right. Yeah. Thank you.
So I think that, so we kind of went over twenty twenty-four, department heads, they have their twenty twenty-four budget performance report. And we'll quickly be going into the twenty twenty-five. This is for, and for department heads. Your twenty twenty-five budget will be, they'll be training for this, so don't worry. Um, cause it's all, it's all an integrated system. So we are able to take the twenty twenty-four adopted budget. We will actually populate your twenty twenty-five budget with those numbers. That seems to be what all the department heads like, they don't have to start from scratch. Then it'll be up to department heads to review that budget, make adjustments where needed. We'll show you how you can run, I mean, we usually actually prepare a budget worksheet for you. Then you can, we'll, we'll give you training on how to run it. We'll show you, we'll be able to throw out your actual numbers for the last three years. Um, you'll be able to monitor, and then you will actually go out there and, 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 and put in your twenty twenty-five budget. Then, um, I, what I, what I, like I said before, once we get June, we'll have to start balancing the budget. We'll probably have to make some cuts to your budget. Um, but that'll all happen, that'll all happen late in the summer. Actually, the departments can kind of start their, their work earlier. Um, I'll probably, could even do it now. I mean, I could take the twenty twenty-four budget and draw it into twenty twenty-five. Okay? Then, training should also be provided for the council, um, to go over the actual budgeting process and, and the workshops that, that will be, that will be scheduled. Um, this is very similar to the books we'll be providing. Um, like I said, my hope was today, that really dissecting the twenty twenty-four budget, and I think seeing, seeing the actual forms that we fill out, I'm hoping that help, will help you in preparing and, and approving the twenty twenty-five budget. Now, I know even Twinko said, well, we just wanna keep this in mind here. We have no idea when the state board of council is gonna show up at our door-
That's true.
For the audit. Keep that, keep that, keep that in mind. That takes up a lot of our time. And then we're getting the trifecta this year, trifecta this year. Um, every three years, um, the FTA comes in for a triennial transit audit. That's a big deal. That's happening this year. And HUD is now announced, they're gonna do an audit this year. So- HUD, HUD, sort of CDPG.
Oh, HUD.
Yep. They don't normally, normally, a lot of times, our HUD grades are looked at by the state board of council. We'll actually, um, bring a federal examiner to kind of look at our, our total federal, um, our federal dollars that we've received. Usually, they pick one of our major, uh, major, major grants to actually audit. But like I said, this year, we actually have HUD, the FTA, actually doing their own audit this year, along with the state board of council. So.
Wow.
They're busy.
I have a few comments. First of all, Mary Lynn and Twinko, thank you for organizing this. Oh my God, this is a lot of stuff. How long have you been doing this work?
Maybe one, nine years.
For a long time, yeah.
That is fantastic. And I also wanna thank the previous council because of, of your, um, the way you have managed these budgets and spending, uh, you know, we have been, we are not in a bad shape, but I think we can, we still need to do a kind of job of, um, of estimating our revenues and staying to the budget. And Mary Angie, thank you for organizing this meeting and bringing us all together so that we're all on one page on this one. Really good exercise. And I think what I thought John said, doing it a couple of times a year like this will be very helpful.
And, you know, I just wanted to make the comments, not gonna be the big ARCA words that Dr. Cora just used. And this is where you always, as a council person, you're always gonna hear, I hear, walk around, Wal, Barton Myers, oh, the city's got it. The city's got the money. So now you're having a real sit-down of what's going on. And you're gonna hear it as a council person. And it, it's good to have this understanding. And I thank you all for putting this on. Um, and I, I can say this, I had had some, some inside information when I asked questions before that would let me know that these things were, you know, not before this, but, you know, in previous years, so I would know. Um, you know, what we do and don't have, and it's always been appreciative. And if you have questions, they, they're awesome at answering these questions that you can, to Twinko and Mary Lynn, so.
But the other thing I wanted to ask, uh, from, you know, is there any, uh, private, uh, like, company or something that can look at our charges for various services compared with, uh?
Oh, we, we just did that. We're in the middle of that right now.
You're already-
So that, yeah, so we, we've already received the first one. So, um, now, um, now the departments, our departments are gonna look at it. Um, and, and what I think is gonna happen, and people are, we have some fees that were established in seventies, eighties, nineties that have never changed. So we're looking at, um, what fees have never, either ever been billed or used, consolidating them, and then creating one ordinance with all of the fees in it. So that we have one place to go to, so you can see all the fees. Because right now, um, it's, it's many ordinances, you know, that are attached to all these different fees. And I think having like a bible is gonna be the best way to, to do that. But, um, we've gotten the first ones already. Actually, I just got it this week.
Also, we'll be adding credit card fees.
Credit?
What? Credit card fees.
Are we? We should. Certainly, we should. I mean, you know, we, we have to get caught up with-
You know, today, I went to the BM.
I went to the.
And they charged the credit card.
Yes, they did.
Yep.
Everybody charged.
Our water department does.
Yeah, water department does.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we want for like bus pass, close to that bus pass, not there, but planning, um, zoo emission fees and stuff like that.
Yes.
We could give that three point five.
Yes. So, yeah, so, it's, it's what it is. I, I mean, right now, we won't talk about it, but we are going to have to talk about the will tax at some point, um, a food and beverage tax at some point.
Yeah.
And, uh, a food, the food and beverage tax, several communities are doing it, and that's a way for us to allow tourists to help us pay for parks and stuff in the city. Um, um, there's food and beverage tax, and that goes through the state legislature. Um, I did, um, talk with our legislators about it, and I did meet with a couple of mayors to discuss what they're doing. Um, those are project-specific and, and time-strength, so basically, if we were to do a food and beverage tax, a fifty-dollar meal, you're talking fifty cents, right? Uh, it's that simple, and, and, but that's money that can generate, you know, probably, we have to do the math, but a million dollars, and what a great way for our tourists that come in and spend all their money at our restaurants to help us take care of our parks and, and our neighborhood parks. I think, um, the, the park department has to be used for specific things, and, and parks and drag and all that is part of it, and I think, uh, we can get on some type of schedule, you know, come up with a plan, and which parks are going to do, put them on the schedule, and, and use that money to support that. So, um, I'm not versed on the, the will tax, but I know that it will generate some money for our, for us to be able to use um, for, for our operations, so, um, those things will come. But food and beverage tax, I just feel like that's a great way for us to let other people pay for stuff.
I agree with that.
So, um, I, we can't get, we tried to get on an amendment downstate for this session, but couldn't get it done. But I'll probably come to the council for some type of resolution, supporting it in the fall, so that when the next session comes, they know that we're in support of something like that, and, so, more to come on that.
Yeah, I just want to thank Mary Lynn, Tminko for putting the program together, introducing, installing the new council people, giving an idea what the budget process is all about.
I apologize, but our engineer has issues, so I had to stop him, go and take care of him, so you still got the information.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it, yeah, it is what it is, we got it done, everybody's a little more educated, but we're just going to.
Yeah.
I think we've been.
Because I know when I started, you learn on your own, you go up to a meeting, you just start trying to learn, yeah.
So. So hopefully, this was useful for you all, and.
Thanks.
If we're not in the middle of an audit, I hope that we will be able to do this sometime June, or get back together and do this again in June, see where we're at, and then after that, we'll probably have the training for the budget process, and then we'll start to run the bu, the budgeting process, you know, end of July, early August, or whenever we decide to do that, so. But you'll, but this is, this is the difference from previous, prior years. You won't be in the dark when the budget process starts, you know, we, we, our council, we fought on when to start the budget process, because we didn't know where we were. I think this will be a little bit different, you'll have a better understanding of where we are, so when we say we're going to start, and we recommend we start in middle of August or end of August, you're going to know where we are. It's not like you're going to be sitting there in the blind, and, and then it's, you know, back and forth. It's because, hey, we're not ready to present it to you, and we'll give you those reasons. It won't be just because, it'll be a reason, so, um, thank you all for coming, it's good to have everybody here. Uh, again, if you have any questions, do you want to reach out, and, meeting adjourned.